Morning, we're gonna get started. We are like super late. Visitors and guests, if they were retired behind the rail, we're gonna get started. Thank you. To give our invitation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Dr. J. Lewis Felton of Mount Erie Church and God of Christ. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Sherrell Parker. Pastor? All guests, visitors, and members, please rise.
Thank you President Clark, and certainly to all the members of this great council, and especially to Councilwoman Sherrell Parker who extended this invitation. I would ask that you would go the extra mile and as a sign of solidarity, join hands with the person next to you as we pray together for our great city. Eternal God, our Father, we are thankful to you that you have brought us together on this auspicious day to engage in your kingdom assignment of the leadership of what we believe to be the greatest city in the world. For this city is the one that gave birth to the greatest nation in the world. Somewhere still in the DNA of the soul of America are the principles of freedom, justice, and equality that can only be found in this birthplace of America, the city of Philadelphia. We thank you, Lord Jesus, for teaching us how to shoulder the awesome responsibility of greatness, for true greatness is in serving others. Each one of us has been called to servant leadership. We thank you, Lord God, that our great city hall is not a building on the side of the road, but one in the middle of the intersection. It is not designed to be passed by, but to be passed through. Leadership means that you've got to get into the crossfire of the intersection, even though intersections are the most dangerous places on the road. For collisions happens at intersection, conflict happens at intersection, and problems erupt at intersection. But the business of life cannot be conducted unless we dare to have the courage to stand in the intersection. Lord Jesus, you were crucified at the intersection. The cross is the place of intersection of humanity and divinity, the real and the ideal, conflict and resolution, good and evil. As we deliberate today and make decisions that will affect future generations, give us grace to stand up to the pressure of being at the intersection of life. Teach us to be tolerant and to live up to our name of being the place of brotherly love and sisterly affection. May you continue to bless our championship city as we provide leadership spiritually and morally to the world. We ask it in the name of our blessed Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor for those very inspiring words. Council will be at ease. Alright, I'm gonna use the Council Preparates prerogative and go a little out of order because the general has to, he has to, has to get, and we don't want to hold him up because we know that we need to continue to feel safe. And he needs to do what he needs to do. We're gonna go and do a brief presentation and then we'll go back to our regular order of business if that's okay with the colleagues. It's okay? Alright, at this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O., and we'll get to our presentations. Alright, I'm sorry. I got it, I got it, I got it. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O., who presented a resolution recognizing the United States Army and representing the Army Lieutenant General Charles Hooper and those accompanying him. I would ask, Councilman, please proceed.
Thank you very much for the exception, Council President and Council colleagues. I'm honored to have with us today Lieutenant General Charles Hooper, and he's a little behind his schedule, so he has to leave, but we are honored to have him. Let me just tell you that Lieutenant General Hooper is the Director of the Defense Security Cooperation Agency, and by the way, a local person. He's a native of Willingboro, New Jersey. Lieutenant General Hooper is a three-star general. He served in command and staff assignments in the U.S. Army Armor Center, the 25th Infantry Division, the 82nd Airborne Division, and the United States Army Recruiting Command, among other things. He is a graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point, earned a Master's of Public Administration from Harvard University in 1989, and then returned in 2005 to Harvard University as a senior research fellow. He graduated from the U.S. Army War College, the United Kingdom Ministry of Defense Chinese Language School in Hong Kong. He has earned a Ranger Tab Expert Infantryman Badge, Senior Parachutist Badge, Aerosault Badge, Army Recruiter Badge, and the French National Defense Medal. He is fluent in Mandarin Chinese and tremendous experience in the international affairs realm. With that, let me just say that today is the 243rd birthday of the United States Army, which was, of course, founded here in Philadelphia. And so with that, let me say that we are pleased to present a resolution recognizing the United States Army for providing for the safety and security of the United of the nation since its creation in the city of Philadelphia 243 years ago.
Whereas, the United States Army history in Philadelphia began with the formation of the oldest regiment in Pennsylvania, the 111th Infantry Regiment, founded by Benjamin Franklin on November 21st, 1747, and?
Whereas, at the outset of the American Revolution, the colonies did not have a formal military with one chain of command. Instead, they relied on volunteer troops from militia companies in New England, which were locally led and supported. In the spring of 1775, as these troops prepared to face the British forces, the colonists recognized that they would only sustain a chance of victory if they organized and enlisted the support of all 13 colonies.
And whereas, meeting in Philadelphia on June 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress formed the Continental Army as a means for the 13 unified American colonies to fight the forces of Britain. The troops based in Boston now had federal support. The Second Continental Congress also resolved to form a committee which would draft rules and regulations for the Army, allocated funds to support troops in Boston and New York, and authorized the creation of 10 companies of expert riflemen from Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia to support the existing militia forces in New England. And whereas, the United States Army's birthday is celebrated each year on this day, June 14th, and?
Whereas, General George Washington was unanimously elected Commander in Chief of the new Army the very next day, and he would lead the colonies to victory and independence, and?
Whereas, since its inception, the United States Army have developed leaders of character who have gone on to serve the greater Philadelphia area and currently provides more than 150 career paths in art, science, intelligence, combat, aviation, engineering, law, and much, much more, and?
Whereas, the United States Army and its 1 million soldiers stand watch for the country day and night against all enemies. They are respected around the world for their bravery and vigor, and?
Whereas, from the Revolution to the Civil War to the World Wars to the present day, the city of Philadelphia is thankful for and is proud to support the United States Army. On the occasion of the Army's 243rd birthday, the city remembers those who have sacrificed to serve their nation in the Army and thanks and recognizes the Army veterans who called Philadelphia home today. Now therefore be it?
Therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes the United States Army for providing for the safety and security of the nation since its creation in the city of Philadelphia 243 years ago, and further resolve that an gross copy of this resolution be presented to the United States Army evidencing the sincere admiration and respect of this legislative body.
And at this time, the Chair recognizes Lieutenant General Charles Hooper for remarks.
Thank you Council President Clark, Councilman O., thank you. Members of the City Council of Philadelphia, distinguished guests, on behalf of the Secretary of the Army Mark Esper and the Chief of Staff of the Army, General Mark Milley, I'd like to thank you all for this resolution recognizing the 243rd anniversary or birthday of the United States Army. Your Army, an army of the people, by the people, and for the people. An army that represents you, an army that looks like you, representing our people from all corners of this great nation, all races, creeds, backgrounds, genders, an army that right as we speak this day is out protecting you. Philadelphia has supported the United States Army since 1775, and the partnership between Philadelphia and the citizens of Philadelphia and our great Army, and equally important, our veterans, is strong and lasts until this day and is yet one example of the patriotism and dedication of the people who live in the city of brotherly love. So on behalf of all of our soldiers and civilians, from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank you all for this recognition, which I accept humbly on their behalf. Thank you very much.
Council will be at ease.
Pick that trophy up, it was a... Yeah, it's Villanova University, just to make sure. And joining Councilman Taubinberger, we have Councilman Heenan, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Gimm, and Councilwoman Parker, and Councilwoman Bass, and Councilman O'Neil.
A truly honor, and it is really, as I said earlier, awesome. It's fantastic that we... Oh yeah, get that right, thank you. That we have this opportunity again. It's great to be on a team, and all these players are accomplished. To be on a championship team, well, that's something very, very special again. And Villanova has worked really, really hard in doing this, and this is just part of the celebration, and we as Philadelphians should always remember the day they won this, and we're glad that they're in our community. A resolution honoring and recognizing Jay Wright and the Villanova University Men's Basketball Team on winning the 2018 NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship. Crushing, it's not often that word is used in this body, crushing Michigan with a seventeen-point win with a final score of seventy-nine to sixty-two.
And whereas Villanova University is a private university located in Radnor Township, they members of the Big East Conference, the Philadelphia Big Five, and are three-time NCAA Men's National Basketball Champions, and?
Whereas the Wildcats had a highly successful regular season totaling thirty-six wins and only four losses, with fourteen of those wins coming from the Big, from Big East Conference games, and?
Whereas the Wildcats breezed their way through the NCAA Tournament with their closest victories coming as twelve-point wins over Texas Tech, third seed, and West Virginia, fifth seed, and?
Whereas all of the players poured their hearts into the game, pushing harder and harder for each victory, culminating in the seventeen-point victory over Michigan in the NCAA Tournament Final, and?
Whereas Coach Jay Wright has led Villanova for the past seventeen years, beginning as head coach in 2001, and leading them to four hundred and twenty regular season wins, three appearances in the NIT, thirteen NCAA Men's Basketball Tournament appearances, and two national championship titles, and?
Man, those statistics are awesome. All right, whereas Coach Jay Wright joined some of the greatest men's basketball coaches of all time, and as only fourteen of those head coaches who have ever won more than one NCAA Men's National Basketball Championships, and?
Whereas Coach Jay Wright was the recipient of the 2018 Legends of Coaching Award, an award that recognizes coaches who exemplify Coach Wooden's high standard of coaching success and personal integrity, and?
Be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honor and correct, congratulates Jay Wright and the Villanova Wildcats Men's Basketball Team on winning the 2018 NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship.
And the Chair recognizes Chris Booth, your remarks.
I just want to say thank you very much for having us here. It's been a pleasure for me and a couple of the guys behind me. It's been our second time coming here, and we always love coming. For Dylan back here, it's his first time, the tall one right here, the tallest one. So it's just, just thank the state of, a thank you, the City of Philadelphia. We love playing at Wells Fargo, we love representing Philly. It's definitely something we play with in our hearts. We loved it all year, and the parade was amazing. They're both amazing, that's probably one of my favorite parts is the parade of the whole thing, to be honest with you, after that we went, so we just want to thank you, the City of Philadelphia, so much for how much you guys rooted us the whole way around, and we love the support, so thank you very much.
And Phil, we want you to come back. This is like a regular thing, and we like it, we like it a lot. Phil, here is the citation.
Oh.
Oh, you want to do that downstairs?
Yeah. Councilman Dees, down. Okay. Okay, back in our normal order. In our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
The President to members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill Numbers 180452, 180504, 180560, 180562, and 180567, and amendments to Bill Numbers 180162 and 180163. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Logan redevelopment area, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 3101 Cecil B. Moore Avenue, and a resolution approving the agreements of sale of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified, to convey certain properties, certain portions of property identified by house number and street address as 1600 through 1636 North Broad Street, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3212 through 3234 Ridge Avenue, 2201 North Natrona Street, and 3201 through 3203 West Sescana Avenue, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 3721 through 3729 Brandywine Street, and a resolution appointing Scott Nasser to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution appointing H. Heatherton Smith to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution appointing Paige Jaffe to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution appointing Belinda Mayo as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and a resolution approving the appointment of Samuel Staiton Jr. as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by amending Section 10 615 entitled Disorderly Conduct and Related Offenses, and Chapter 10 2100 entitled Marijuana Possession to provide for certain additional offenses to be enforceable by civil penalties, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker, you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. In our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
This morning I offered three resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Office of Special Events on the occasion of the City of Philadelphia being recognized as the 2017 IFEE World Festival and Events and Event City Award recipient.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the Pennsylvania State Legislature for the passage of Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania Legislature to support House Bill 2132 and Senate Bill 1140, which would commit the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to 100% renewable energy by 2050.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce six non-privileged resolutions. One is co-sponsored by Kenyatta Johnson, as we both share this block. All of us know, who are old enough, about Marcus Yates, and how he started our fight dealing with guns, and dealing with, dealing with gang war, and so many other issues, and Tim Spencer and so many other fighters came out of that. So he and I will co-sponsor that resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 3721 through 3729 Brandywine Street. Add a non-privileged resolution naming West Mantua between Brown and 36th Street Herman C. Rice Way. Add a non-privileged resolution also naming North 34th Street between Mantua and Fairmount Avenue's Tim Spencer Boulevard. Add a non-privileged resolution also naming the 6,000 block of Springfield Avenue Marcus J. Yates Way. Add a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Belinda Mayo as a member of the Board, as a member of...
Those six resolutions, yes, read them, is it? Okay. And the four non-privileged resolutions read by the Chief Clerk will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Belinda Mayo as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
And that will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Samuel Staiton Jr. as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Philadelphia Housing Authority.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and four resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Master Street, 13th Street, Girard Avenue, Watch Street, and Thompson Street.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the agreements of sale of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area to convey certain portions of property identified by house number and street address as 1600 through 1636 North Broad Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house number and street addresses as 3101 Cecil B. Moore Avenue.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration these convey conditional fees simple titled to serve the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1106 North, North Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Also on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President, today you offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 9100 block of Ryerson Road, both sides.
Further to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 2800 block of Willets Road, both sides.
Further to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have one resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
Co-sponsored or with the sentiments of all members of council.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 2400 block of North 59th Street as W. Wilson Good Senior Way.
Thank you, and that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
A privileged resolution honoring the Philly Pops and recognizing the orchestra's cultural impact and community contributions in the City of Philadelphia and beyond on the occasion of the Pops 40th Anniversary.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McKeone Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President, I have one bill, one resolution, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 9, Chapter 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to establish a license and related requirements for tire dealers.
Further to committee.
And a privileged resolution congratulating and honoring the Frankfurt High School Pioneers Baseball Team on winning the 2018 Philadelphia Public League Championship.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration these convey conditional fees simple titled to serve the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 7th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, I have one privileged and one non-privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution commending the Philadelphia Energy Authority for offering the service line warranty program, an optional program to guarantee privately-owned utility line repairs to the citizens of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon Governor Tom Wolf and the General Assembly to enact the proposal of the Philadelphia Parking Authority in order to provide new capital funding for the school district of Philadelphia.
And that will be next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have two non-privileged resolutions, one co-authored by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Blackwell, and members Green and Taubinberger. The second one is co-authored by Councilmembers Reynolds Brown, Johnson and Jones, Green and Taubinberger, and want to thank all the staffs for working together.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Dr. Sadie Tanner, Marcel Alexander Esquire, and calling for the creation, and...
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution commending the Pennsylvania General Assembly for working in bipartisan manner to address victims' rights and declaring support for the enactment of Marcy's Law in Pennsylvania.
Thank you, that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President, I have no bills or resolutions today, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President, I have one non-privileged resolution, and I'm proud to introduce one bill co-sponsored by Councilmembers Kenyatta Sanchez, Greenlee, Heenan Squilla, Blackwell Jones, and Johnson.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter to require certain covered employees to provide fair workweek employment standards for certain employees, including but not limited to reasonable notices of schedules, rest time between shifts, and opportunities for additional hours.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the United States Hospital Representatives to pass HR 5623 providing for the relief of Carmelo Apollonio Hernandez and her four children, Fidel Artelaro Apollonio, Carrio Artelaro Apollonio, Yoselin Artelaro Apollonio, and Edwin Artelaro Apollonio, due to extraordinary circumstances of persecution, and calling on the United States Department of Homeland Security to exercise prosecutorial discretion to stay the family's removal and join the motion to reopen the Hernandez family's case for asylum.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Good afternoon, Council President and colleagues, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, I offer three non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution appointing H. Heatherton Smith to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Scott Nasser to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Further to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Paige Jaffe to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, I offer one privilege and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings on the feasibility of transferring private sewer and water systems to the city sewer and water system.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Logan redevelopment area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 4715 through 4755 North Marshall Street, 701 through 741 Roosevelt Boulevard, including 700 through 716 Wyoming Avenue, 901 through 939 Roosevelt Boulevard, including 922 through 940 Cortlandt Street and 4523 through 4545 North 10th Street, 4710 through 4750 North Marshall Street, including 4723 through 4767 North 7th Street, 4714 through 47466 North 7th Street, including 4715 through 4769 North Franklin Street and 701 through 715 Wyoming Avenue, 4715 through 4765 North 8th Street, including 4714 through 4768 North Franklin Street, and 717 through 731 West Wyoming Avenue, 4700 through 4762 North 8th Street, including 4701 through 4763 North 9th Street, 4712 through 4764 North 9th Street, including 901 through 919 West Wyoming Avenue, and 4715 through 4769 North Hutchinson Street, 4715 through 4765 North 10th Street, including 921 through 939 West Wyoming Avenue, and 4714 through 4760 North Hutchinson Street, 4608 through 4626 North 8th Street, including 4800 through 824 West Wyoming Avenue, and 4621 through 4647 North 9th Street, 4600 through 4650 North 9th Street, including 900 through 918 West Wyoming Avenue, and 4601 through 4655 North Hutchinson Street, 4601 through 4655 North 10th Street, including 920 through 938 West Wyoming Avenue, and 4600 through 4650 North Hutchinson Street, 4511 through 4549 North 11th Street, 4508 through 4546 North 10th Street, 4601 through 4655 North 11th Street, 4600 through 4654 North 10th Street, 4711 through 4761 North 11th Street, and 4712 through 4764 North 10th Street.
Thank you, that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President, I offer no bills or resolutions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of the Hold.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Hold reports, they have five resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Hold, which is referred to Resolution Number 180403, entitled a resolution approving the appointment of Abby Poszewski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board, and Resolution Number 180470, entitled a resolution confirming the appointment of Barbara Moore as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority, serving the term ending January 1, 2019, and Resolution Number 180471, entitled a resolution confirming the reappointment of Christopher Lewis as a member of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January 1, 2023, and Resolution Number 180578, entitled a resolution confirming the appointment of Michael Kopistansky as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority, to serve in the term ending January 1, 2023, and Resolution Number 180579, entitled a resolution approving the reappointment of Sonny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Resolution Number 180403, 180470, 180471, 180578, and 180579 will be placed on our final passes' calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on Rules reports twenty-four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. And Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on, the Committee on Rules, which is referred to Bill Number 180100, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Sescana Avenue, 13th Street, and Diamond Street, further to adopt the master plan amendment for Temple University, and to approve the construction project on the site proposed for rezoning, and to approve the removal of a previously planned construction project from the master plan, and Bill Number 180295, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending the one-year rule modifying certain public notice requirements and making related changes. And Bill Number 180346, entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes. And Bill Number 180423, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia's to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Delaware River, Pennyback Street Extended, State Road, Ron Street, Frankfurt Avenue, Academy Road, and Linden Avenue Extended; and Bill Number 180424, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14603 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Specific Standards by amending the number of curb cuts permitted for certain zoning districts; and Bill Number 180426, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Packer Avenue, 10th Street, Citizens Bank Way, Patterson Avenue, and Broad Street; and Bill Number 180427, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Dunk's Ferry Road, the Pocessin Creek, Knights Road, Mechanicsville Road, Medford Road, and Lester Road; and Bill Number 180451, entitled an ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania and to approve the proposed addition to 3900 Walnut Street; and Bill Number 180454, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Grant Avenue, Academy Road, Convent Avenue, Willets Road, and Ashton Road; and Bill Number 180463, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14604 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Accessory Uses and Structures by making technical changes to the size and sighting of roof deck access structures; and Bill Number 180496, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14600 entitled Use Regulations by amending exceptions to use tables for green roofs; and Bill Number 180498, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to provide for the procedures for the administrative review process; and Bill Number 180501, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating a new overlay entitled FAO, Frankfurt Academy Overlay District; and Bill Number 180503, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bluegrass Road, Grant Avenue, Ashton Road, Willets Road, Welsh Road, Dewey Street, Revere Street, Tremont Street, Leonard Street, and Welsh Road; and Bill Number 180504, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising Section 14303, Subparagraph 11A, entitled Registered Community Organizations by providing funding for limited insurance coverage for registered community organizations; and Bill Number 180505, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Haverford Avenue, Felton Street, Arch Street, and Grove Street; and Bill Number 180506, entitled an ordinance to amend the master plan for the River Road Residential Mixed-Use Area bounded by Montgomery County Line, a railroad right-of-way, Shawmont Avenue, and the Schuylkill River, to approve a subdivision and the construction of a utility project; and Bill Number 180507, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Conrad Street, Indian Queen Lane, Scots Lane, and Crawford Street; and Bill Number 180509, entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by creating a new Wissahican NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District for the area generally bounded by Henry Avenue, Hermitage Street, Ridge Avenue, and the Wissahican Creek; and Bill Number 180510, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending the subsection entitled NCA Ridge Avenue Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay; and Bill Number 180511, entitled an ordinance amending Section 14503 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCA Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay by adding a new subsection entitled South Broad Street Gateway; and Bill Number 180517, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Leaper Street, Oxford Avenue, Harrison Street, Oakland Street, and Folk Road Street; and Bill Number 180518, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Godfrey Avenue, Castor Avenue, and Fillmore Street; and Bill Number 180519, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Allegheny Avenue, Kensington Avenue, Lehigh Avenue, and Second Street. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of the 24 bills that were just read into the record by Mr. Decker.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of the 24 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of Public Property and Public Works reports out six bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, which is referred to Bill Number 180367, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 16400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Vacant and Surplus Properties to allow property dispositions by the Philadelphia Land Bank; and Bill Number 180453, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner and the Free Library of Philadelphia on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement to lease from the Philadelphia Municipal Authority personal computers and associated equipment, and receive related maintenance and other services for the use of the Free Library of Philadelphia; and Bill Number 180455, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Y Partners Limited Partnership for use by the City of a portion of the premises located at 1425 Arch Street; and Bill Number 180456, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire free simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of the parcels of land, together with the improvements they are on located in and about the area bounded by West Huntington Street, North 31st Street, West York Street, and North Napa Street; and Bill Number 180462, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into an amendment to sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the use by the City of premises located at 1101 Market Street; and Bill Number 180508, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire free simple title or lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land, together with the improvements they are on located in and about the area bounded by the Schuylkill River, the Schuylkill River Trail, Haggis Mill Road, and Port Royal Avenue. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair can recognize this Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day of the six bills that were just read into the record.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180367, 180453, 180455, 180456, 180462, and 180508. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 180236, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by placing on the city plan an irregularly shaped area extending along the northerly side of John F. Kennedy Boulevard from 22nd Street to 23rd Street in order to conform with the lines established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania; and Bill Number 180555, entitled an ordinance amending Section 9204 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Center City, and Section 9205 entitled Sidewalk Sales to exempt sales of fresh fruits and vegetables on the abutting sidewalk of a property by the owner or tenant of that property from the requirements of Section 9204 and 9205; and Bill Number 180565, entitled an ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streets by amending Chapter 11500 entitled paving by creating Section 11508 entitled Private Development Projects by providing that the Department of Streets may establish regulations to require certain private development projects to pave and mill the adjacent roadway; and Bill Number 180566, entitled an ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streets by amending Chapter 11600 entitled Construction, Encroachments, and Projections Over, On, and Under Streets by amending Section 11608 entitled Excavation and Construction In and Under the Sidewalks by providing that every away encroachments may extend into the street line as far as may be required by the applicable utility provider. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of Bill Number 180236, 180555, 180565, and 180566.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180236, 180555, 180565, and 180566. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Kianah Sanchez for a report from the Committee of License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspection reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspection, to which is referred Bill Number 180348, entitled an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code, Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, by adding requirements regarding the use of dumpsters on private property; and Bill Number 180464, entitled an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code, by amending Subcode F, the Philadelphia Fire Code, and Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to add sections requiring hardwired interconnected smoke alarms in boarding homes; and Bill Number 180521, entitled an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code by amending Section A503 entitled Prosecution, and A601 entitled Fines of the Philadelphia Administrative Code to provide for assessment of an additional penalty in connection with repeated abatements of unlawful conditions on vacant and exterior properties. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kianah Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180348, 180464, 180521.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180348, 180464, 180521. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee of Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Labor and Civil Service, to which is referred Bill Number 180557, entitled an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Public Employees' Retirement Code, to expand Plan 16 to include certain employees, to change contribution rates for certain employees in the city, to amend various provisions relating to the Deferred Retirement Option Plan, and to make technical amendments; and Bill Number 180599, entitled an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Public Employees' Retirement Code, to provide for additional members of Plan 16, to change contribution rates, and to specify the stacked hybrid cap for certain employees, and to make technical amendments. Respectful reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180557 and 180599.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180557 and 180599. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee of Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs reports one bill with a favorable recommendation and one bill without recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs, to which is referred Bill Number 170673, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an agreement for the use of Cobb's Creek Golf Club, Garrycon Golf Club, and the City Line Sports Center, under which the operator will restore and maintain and operate those facilities as a single first-class public golf course. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to Council without recommendation; and Bill Number 180459, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city to receive an easement from the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use of a portion of 3025 Meeting House Road, and to grant to the owners of property on the 3,000 block of Meeting House Road an easement for stormwater drainage purposes across a portion of Pocessin Creek Park. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 170673 and 180459.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 170673 and 180459. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from Committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from Committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of Council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan, I'm sorry, Councilman Greenlee at this time for a motion regarding Bills Number 180346.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit amendment to be offered to Bill Number 180346 at this time.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and again, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 180346. Copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of Council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 180346 has been amended. Bill Number 180346, as amended, will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of Council. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a motion regarding Bills Number 180346.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit an additional amendment to be offered to Bill Number 180346 at this time.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and again, Councilman, Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee again.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilwoman Parker, I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 180346. Copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of Council, and I move for the adoption of that amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 180346 has been amended. Bill Number 180346, as amended, will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of Council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker at this time for a motion regarding Bills Number 180557.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit an amendment to be offered to Bill Number 180557 at this time.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and again, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 180557. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of Council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 180557 has been amended, and Bill Number 180557, as amended, will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of Council. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker at this time for a motion regarding Bills Number 180599.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit an amendment to be offered to Bill Number 180599 at this time.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and again, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 180599. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of Council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 180599 has been amended, and Bill Number 180599, as amended, will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of Council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passes for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendars today. Resolutions Number 180614, 180615, 180616, 180617, 180618, 180624, 180625, 180626, 180627, 180628, 180629, and 180634.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the resolutions consent agenda shortly. Chair now recognizing Councilman Heenan for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. Bill Numbers 180288, 180290, 180077, 180458, 180497, 180500, 180520, 180524, 180563, 180293, 180383, 180396, 180429, 180425, or 452, 180460, 180461, 180465, 180499, 180513, 180516, 180523, 180550, 180551, 180559, 180560, 180561, 180562, 180567.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizing Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions of bills being considered on the consent agendas, the following resolutions of bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 180537, 180001, 180015, 180286, 180261, 180163, 180164, 180347, 180351, 180428, 180512, 180514, and 180234. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying in a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask you to sign up at the table to my left when your name is called. You will go to the middle of the council chambers. There is a podium. There is a device on that podium. When the light on that device turns green, it will be your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Ed O'Donnell. Commenting on 170408.
Yes. How to prevent suspensions in schools. And first, I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell for her passionate concern to help the poor. Mother Teresa said, "The poor, the poor, always the poor." And I, my charity helps a lot of homeless people in Philly. And if you look at them, the situations look hopeless. But the most hopeless situation in the history of the world was the thief on the cross on the first Good Friday. All he said was, "Remember me." And Jesus said, "This day you will be with me in paradise." Councilwoman Blackwell has been a catalyst for thousands of hopeless people in this city to say, "Remember me." And heaven is the issue. Now, how to prevent suspensions. My charity's donated curriculum materials to 30 schools in health, mental health, philosophy, religion, law, how to save the environment, how to present war. You start in kindergarten. You get two kids fighting in a sandbox, you teach them to forgive. You tell them not to put unhealthy things in the body. You teach them to think. If I break this law, this will happen. Religion, you teach them to love other people. I started with my nieces when they were two years old. Love everybody. Help everybody. Help the poor. Don't put unhealthy things in your body. And you've got to teach love in schools. That's the key. And in the home, the father and the mother use positive words with each other, positive words with the kids, immaculately clean homes, and no cigarettes and alcohol in home. Now, here's the problem. Savannah Guthrie, Lester Holt, Tim Furlong, Channel 10, Sarah Bloom Quest, they're not doing a good job on that issue of teaching values in schools. We need people in the media who do their homework on us. And to finish Father's Day, my father was a doctor, went to Yale and Yale Med. The greatest gift a father can give is to teach the children to have unshakable faith in the love of God. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, next speaker, please.
Christine Riddick. Commenting on 180537.
Yes. Is it still morning, or is it afternoon? Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
This is my second time before you. First of all, and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone from the city council members for joining Councilman O. in the Resolution 180537 in regard to my son Eric Riddick. Each of you receive booklet of information, and the importance of, and the importance of that is, we're, we're not asking for blind support in terms of my son's release. There's information, scientific, actual and factual information regarding my son's case. It's been 26 years and eight months of injustice in my son's case, and believe it or not, in all the thousands and thousands of others behind the walls who have not received justice. Right now in Philadelphia, justice is in season. There's a movement to actually pursue and introduce legislation to change some of the old antiquated laws that's on the books that keep innocent people or those that have been sentenced excessively with life sentences. So I want to thank everyone again in city council for joining Councilman O. in his resolution and having his resolution pass. I hope everyone will get on board with the movement of justice reform. There's a lot of work here in Philadelphia that has to be done. We've taken the first step with electing someone in the district attorney's office that can make a change, a most necessary change here in Philadelphia in terms of the laws, in terms of those that are employed by the district attorney that's just there receiving a paycheck and actually not doing any work. And he has taken the first steps to let the public know that he's trying to regain the trust of the people of Philadelphia by making the necessary hard changes, letting go those that just sit there and receive a paycheck and never do anything in terms of the pursuit of justice. So again, I'd like to thank everyone in city council, not just for my son, but for all those who may not have a voice, and hope that you all will join the bandwagon that's right here in Philadelphia in terms of justice for all, and starting with the judicial system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Decker.
Dana Baker-Riddick. Commenting on 180537.
Good afternoon, everyone. Kind of just lost my voice sitting back here, but I want to thank all the councilmen and councilwomen on behalf of my husband Eric Riddick. I want to send a special thank to Councilman O., who initially opened up the book and read the actual evidence that proves my husband's innocence. He's been incarcerated 26 years and eight months for a crime he didn't commit. It's been a long time coming. We really appreciate it. Eric appreciates it. The light is being shed on his case, and he can come home and be with his family. So I'm not going to be long-winded. I just want to thank everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Clifford Smith. Commenting on 180537.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Clifford Smith. I'm the uncle of Eric Riddick. There's not very much that I can add to what my sister and Eric's wife said. We are so grateful to city councilman O. for really taking the time to really look, read the evidence that proves that I refuse innocent. And I'm sure that every city council person here had the opportunity to also read the scientific evidence to prove that Eric Riddick is an innocent man who has been incarcerated for 26, 27 years. The family, our family, have been fighting to free Eric since 1991. People who knew him, people who know the family, are also been out there with the, in the fight to free Eric Riddick. So again, I want to thank everybody in city council for passing the resolution, and we're going to keep right on fighting for Eric's freedom. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Decker, next one.
Joe Danahell. Commenting on 180614, 180615, 180610, 180625, 180628, 180616, 180617, 180626, 180627, and 180629.
Good afternoon. This is an official decree of the people and written down as quo warranto as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council mayor and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Flag Day and D-Day remind people of the sacrifices some have endured to defend the rule of law. Officials take an oath to protect, defend, and obey Constitution and law. No wonder oath violators hate Flag Day, D-Day, and Pearl Harbor Day. The theft of my home, theft of my just compensation, and opposition denial of my Seventh Amendment trial by jury makes council, mayor, governor, and others ineligible to share the podium with anyone who served the country and flag. How dare you officials destroy the republic for which it stands. Violating oath Constitution laws in the very place they were written earns any official a jail cell next to numerous other convicted Philadelphia officials. This Rico-style conspiracy to deny rights requires immediate action by the Attorney Generals to find the missing HUD just compensation money. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of clothes, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987. PA, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384. PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26. PA CSA 701, 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965. 14-1330, 14-4056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter of government revoked until constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse a sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to play a fire. The sovereign people require oath Constitution laws be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, Constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, will you now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda?
Resolution Number 180614, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2145, 2147, and 2149 North 15th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 180615, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2006 North Woodstock Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 180616, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 10R Nolan Court located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 180617, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 180618, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2340 North 19th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 180624, entitled a resolution renaming the 900 block of West Cayuga Street Wayne Coach Whiz Allen Way to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life and legacy of Wayne Allen for his dedication to the Hunting Park community. And Resolution Number 180625, entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 180626, entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 180627, entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 180628, entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 180629, entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situating in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 180634, entitled a resolution urging the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate to pass House Resolution 2358 and Senate Bill 1050, the Chinese-American World War II Veterans Congressional Gold Medal Act.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
It's been moved and, it has been moved and seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read- After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and be placed on our regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, will you please now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda?
Bill number 1-80288 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 52S and 53S in the area lying southeast of Penrose Avenue and southwest of 26th Street by striking from the city plan and vacating an irregularly-shaped portion of the right-of-way of Penrose Avenue along the southeasterly side thereof, relocating a portion of the southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point southwesterly therefrom, and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes. And bill number 1-80290 entitled an ordinance authorizing the paving of the relocated southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point approximately 1,323 feet southwesterly therefrom. And bill number 1-80077 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Privilege Taxes by eliminating for new businesses the requirement to make an estimated payment when filing a return for their first tax year of business operations and allowing the estimated payment in succeeding years to be made in quarterly And bill number 1-80458 entitled an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2019 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith. And bill number 1-80497 entitled an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And bill number 1-80500 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a community development block grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for a housing opportunities for persons with age grant, and to file applications with the Commonwealth to obtain grants under the Act of April 12, 1956. And bill number 1-80520 entitled an ordinance authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance by the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation on behalf of the Philadelphia Gas Works of two amended and restated service agreements for gas transportation service under rate schedule FT with Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Corporation. And bill number 1-80524 entitled an ordinance approving a fourth amendment to lease agreement between Philadelphia Gas Works by Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation solely in its capacity as operator and manager of the city-owned Philadelphia Gas Works and 1101 Chestnut Street Limited Partnership for certain premises located at 1137 Chestnut Street. And bill number 1-80563 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter, 194300, entitled Monthly Reconciliation Reporting. And bill number 1-80293 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 34S and 41S by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Packer Avenue from Christopher Columbus Boulevard to the pierhead line of the Delaware River and reserving and placing on the city plan a right-of-way. And bill number 1-80383 entitled an ordinance authorizing Louis Louis Restaurant to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 3611 Walnut Street. And bill number 1-80396 entitled an ordinance authorizing St. Lazarus Bill number 1-80396 entitled an ordinance authorizing St. Lazarus Bar to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 102 West Girard Avenue. And bill number 1-80429 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 9200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Activities on Streets to establish licensing and other requirements regarding the placement of bicycles and other small vehicles in the public right-of-way for the purpose of rental of such vehicles, authorizing the adoption of regulations in connection with such licensing program, and amending chapter 12800 of the Code entitled Bicycle Regulations and Penalties to establish parking and related rules for bicycles and other small vehicles, including those used in connection with such licenses. And bill number 1-80452 entitled an ordinance amending section 2 of an ordinance, bill number 160145, approved April 19, 2016, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 44 by placing on the city plan 37th Street from Market Street to Filbert Street and from Filbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, north of Filbert Street, and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And bill number 1-80460 entitled an ordinance authorizing 618 Market Limited Partnership to construct, own, and maintain facade enhancement encroachments at 618 Market Street. And bill number 1-80461 entitled an ordinance authorizing Wander Inn Incorporated to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 2500 South Third Street. And bill number 1-80465 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 10700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refuge and Littering by providing for additional penalties and consequences for short dumping. And bill number 1-80499 entitled an ordinance authorizing the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service in a portion of the 4200 block of Regent Square. And bill number 1-80513 entitled an ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South 22nd Street and 15th Street. And bill number 1-80516 entitled an ordinance revising parking regulations on Pine Street between South Broad Street and South 22nd Street. And bill number 1-80523 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 10500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Damaging, Defacing, and Interfering With to Prohibit Camping on Property Without the Owner's Permission. And bill number 1-80550 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations along Mantua Avenue, North 37th Street, and Ogden Street to enable the installation of the Mantua Avenue Greenway. And bill number 1-80551 entitled an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Filbert Street from North 38th Street to North 37th Street Eastbound. And bill number 1-80559 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Rising Sun Avenue between Adams Avenue and East Godfrey Avenue. And bill number 1-80560 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 250 by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portion of Montour Street from Adams Avenue to Falkrod Street. And bill number 1-80561 entitled an ordinance amending section 9213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location on Castor Avenue. And bill number 1-80562 entitled an ordinance authorizing Buchanan to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 7254 Castor Avenue. And bill number 1-80567 entitled an ordinance authorizing Plaza Garibaldi Incorporated doing business as Frida Cantina to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1,000 Wolf Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills having been read on two different days, a question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker shall call a roll, and upon being called, each councilmember shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye or for which bill the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunnar Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members having voted in affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. And Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of 1-80537.
Resolution number 1-80537 entitled a resolution respectfully requesting that Governor Wolf grant a pardon to Eric Riddick in consideration of the evidence establishing his innocence.
Can we move it? Not, we not moving? Yeah. Are we going to approve that? Chair recognizes Councilman O. Are we moving that today?
Yes.
We are?
Yes.
Yeah. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move that the resolution be adopted.
You get a second?
Second.
Second. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I won't be supporting this resolution, and it's not because of any doubt of what is in the resolution by Councilman O. or what the family has said. I've read the booklet. I understand all the arguments on this case. I just think that, as far as I remember, I don't think we've ever taken a position on granting a pardon. I will certainly acknowledge that sometimes we go out of the lane and where we should be, but I just, and in this case, I just think that we should trust the judgment of Governor Wolf, and for that reason, I will not be going on record supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Yes, I appreciate the councilmen's words, and I agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Taubenberger, Greenlee, and O'Neal are nay. Ayes have it. Resolution 1-80537 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title, I believe, 1-80001.
An ordinance amending title, amending title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code by adding a new chapter, 6310, entitled Sodium Safety Warning Labeling for Chain Restaurants.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Mr. President, I move that rules of council be suspended so as to permit an amendment to be offered to bill number 1-80001.
Second. What?
Move for the adoption.
I know, I know. That's all right. You're good, you're good. There's been a motion and a second for an amendment to 1-80001. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. 1-80001 has amended. Will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 1-80015.
An ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to organize an authority to be known as the Callahan Business Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of the Municipality Authorities Act.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment to bill number 1-80015. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move the adoption of the amendment.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I know. It's been a long, long session. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Number 1-80015 is amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 1-80286.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Girard Avenue, Broad Avenue, Fairmount Avenue, and Corinthian Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment to bill number 1-80286. Amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution 1-80286 is amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 1-80261.
An ordinance amending subsection 192604, subparagraph 6 of the Philadelphia Code under which businesses may enter into agreements to make contributions to community development corporations and certain other organizations to receive credits against business income and receive taxes by increasing the number of businesses for which the credit shall be made available to.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Green is going to offer the amendment on my behalf.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Heenan. This is a matter that both Councilman Heenan, myself, and other members of council have been working on for some time. I know we are trying to provide additional opportunities for our community development corporations in our city to have more resources. This amendment provides additional dollars and slots for CDC program by way of a grant program and starts a pilot in that regard. I offer amendment to bill number 1-80261. Copy of the amendment is circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. 1-80261 has been amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 1-80163.
An ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2019 capital budget.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to bill number 1-80163. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Bill number 1-80163 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 1-80164.
An ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2019.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Bill number 1-80164 is adopted. Excuse me. And it will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 1-80347.
An ordinance amending chapter 211600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Trust Fund to authorize the establishment of separate sub-funds to receive, respectively, revenues attributable to recording fees and revenues attributable to certain payments required upon construction of certain real estate.
This sidebar confusion over here. All right. Mr. Decker.
Bill number 1-80347 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 211600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Trust Fund to authorize the establishment of separate sub-funds to receive, respectively, revenues attributable to recording fees and revenues attributable to certain payments required upon construction of certain real estate.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I propose an amendment to bill 1-80347. A copy of the amendment has been circulated. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. 1-80347 is amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 1-80351.
An ordinance providing for a payment to the city upon the construction of certain real estate and directing council to appropriate revenues from such payments to the Department of Planning and Development, Division of Housing and Community Development in order to support equitable neighborhood development by constructing affordable housing, including units for sale or rent, and by providing assistance to Philadelphians who desire to become homeowners.
And chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 1-80351. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bill number 1-80351 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. Okay, is that it? One more. Mr. Decker, 1-80428.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking and tow-away regulation on Black Lake Place from McNulty Road to its terminus further southwesterly therefrom. from McNulty Road to its terminus further southwardly therefrom.
Chair recognizes, Councilman O'Neal.
I'd like to introduce an amendment to bill number 180428, a copy of which has been circulated to all council members.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, 180428 is amended, and it will be placed on our second reading and final passes' calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 180512.
An ordinance for rising parking regulations on Pine Street between South Broad Street and South Front Street.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Johnson. Or Squilla? Neither. Squilla? I'm sorry. I know, it's that South Philly thing. I understand.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment to bill number 150512. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it. Bill number 180512 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes' calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 180514.
An ordinance revising parking regulations on Spruce Street between South Broad Street and South Second Street.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer amendment to bill number 180514. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move the adoption of the amendment.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it. Bill number 180514 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes' calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 180234.
An ordinance amending title 21 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Messalinas by creating a new chapter, 211600, entitled Environmental Impact Statements, to provide for the preparation of such statements in connection with council legislation.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to salute and say thank you to Councilman Green for his insight with regards to this amendment, and a copy of the amendment to bill number 180234 has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it. Bill number 180234 has been amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passes' calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Office of Special Events on the occasion of the City of Philadelphia being recognized as the 2017 IFEA World Festival and Event City Award recipient introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Pennsylvania State Legislature for the passage of the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE Program introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Philly Pops and recognizing the orchestra's cultural impact and community contributions in the City of Philadelphia and beyond on the occasion of the Pops' 40th anniversary introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Johnson.
Y'all never heard of the Pops before? It's a good group. I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. It's been moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring the Frankfurt High School Pioneer's baseball team on winning the 2018 Philadelphia Public League Championship introduced by Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
I move for his adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commending the Philadelphia Energy Authority for offering the Service Line Warranty Program, an optional program to guarantee privately-owned utility line repairs to the citizens of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the community on streets and services to hold hearings on the feasibility of transferring private sewer and water systems to the city sewer and water system introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes, Councilman Taubinberger.
Council President, thank you very much. I want to invite all my colleagues to attend a press conference in the mayor's reception room led by Mayor Jim Kenny in announcing officially the soccer match between the Philadelphia Union and Eintacht Frankfurt. The reason we're doing such a fuss on this and making people aware of it, they are our sister city, and I think it's something that we should collaborate with them, very much so, and also alert people that we are sister cities to other cities in the world, and particularly in this case Frankfurt-Eintacht. The reason this started was to promote sister cities to begin with. This process started over three years ago, and in between all this, Eintacht Frankfurt, to the surprise of all soccer aficionados in Germany, became the German champion. So they're coming here as the German national champion. We look forward to the game. The game will be on July the 14th, and monies raised from that game will go to children, students in Philadelphia to travel to other sister cities throughout the world. So it's a great cause. I urge my colleagues to join in the official announcement, and that is at 11:30 tomorrow. It also should be noted, for the record, that the United States has been chosen as the host nation, one of the host nations for the World Cup in 2026. So that is also another thing that we're leaning to and trying to get one of those games played in Philadelphia. On a personal note, my staff intern, who started as an intern, Aaron Demick, is graduating tomorrow from Drexel University, and he is coming back after doing a practicum in Utah, but he's coming back to my staff as a full-time person. I am doing my best to keep Philadelphia graduates in Philadelphia. Council President, thank you very much.
All right. Awesome. And I suspect we'll be getting a request for a raise.
Yay!
Awesome. Stand up, stand up.
Yay!
You waiting that memo for a pay increase. Chair recognizes, Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for passing that resolution on Eric Riddick. I would say that as a former prosecutor and someone who's very much engaged in supporting law enforcement, I think it is very important for law enforcement to ensure that while we enforce laws, we certainly don't have innocent persons incarcerated for crimes they did not commit. This is a very unusual situation where the evidence is very clear that Eric Riddick did not commit this crime. However, 26 years later, what is really keeping him behind bars is a flaw in Pennsylvania's Post Conviction Relief Act. And while he has, in a pro se sense, brought his case forward to the Supreme Court, it is only a change in the Post Conviction Relief Act that will allow him and others like him to present their evidence of innocence to an appellate court. With this resolution, I will then ask members of the House and the Senate to do resolutions as well, and then request the governor to consider a pardon of Eric Riddick. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. A self-assured woman named Harriet Tubman stated that she freed 1,000 slaves and said she would have freed 1,000 more had they but known they were slaves. 153 years ago, Juneteenth is known as the day that abolished slavery in the United States. On June 19th, 1965, Union General Gordon Granger and 2,000 Union troops went down and arrived in Texas to take control of the state to make sure that slaves were free. The Emancipation Proclamation was issued on September 27th, 1862, with an effective date of January 1863. And the reason that happened, Mr. President, was to make sure that farmers could bring in the crops before they freed the slaves. So that emancipation had very little immediate effect for people in bondage. Two years, five months, and 18 days after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, the last of those enslaved within the borders of the United States were freed, leading to an eruption around the country. And the words "Juneteenth" became the name for the celebration of freedom from slavery as a result of those words, "June 19th," being slurred by speech. They created one word, "Juneteenth." Juneteenth is the oldest celebration of African-American observance of freedom in the United States, continuous observation of that fact. It's a milestone of triumph, of the human spirit, and a overcoming of harshness of the institution of slavery. This celebration honors the ancestors who arrived in the inhumane bondage and demonstrated the pride of their legacy of perseverance. The Johnson House, a built-in 1768 located in Germantown, is one of those homes that Quakers allowed runaway slaves to live in. There are houses like that in Roxborough. There are houses like that in West Philly and Belmont, Belmont Mansion, all over Philadelphia. Abolitionists stood up in their places of worship to speak out against the institution of slavery. Some of those famous abolitionists were Harriet Tubman, Sojourner Truth, Frederick Douglass, all of them joining with the Quakers to denounce that institution. At Independence Mall this Saturday, there will be a commemoration of that event. If you've never been, it is a really good parade that results in that celebration. One of the things we should know about President Washington and his owning of slaves, there are seven names in a case down there, and they were Washington slaves. And Michael Cord talks about this eloquently. I could never do it like him. But he talks about the fact that Washington was of such a frame of mind, knowing the laws of the North, knowing that if they stayed a certain period of time, based on Quaker law here, those slaves would be free. So every year, he would take those seven slaves back to his plantation for a couple of days so they would remain in bondage. So I would ask all of you, the good people in this chamber, not Quakers but Quaker-like, to come out and join us at the Independence Mall at high noon and be a part of history. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the 100th anniversary and celebration of Father's Day. And so to all the fathers out here, I just want to say, have a great weekend. I salute you. Relax and enjoy yourself, and continue being the strong backbone that we are, not only to this society, but this city, this state, and this country. Happy Father's Day, fathers. Have a great weekend.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a speech on behalf of the majority and a motion to adjourn.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and kudos to you, Councilman Johnson, for lifting all fathers up. It makes a difference. Mr. President, I want to bring to our colleagues' attention that for the fourth consecutive year, our city is going to be awarded the International Festival and Events Association Award. There's only one other city in the world that has enjoyed four consecutive years of being celebrated by this organization, and that city is Sydney, Australia. Other reasons are obvious, in that 2015, we successfully hosted the World Meeting of Families. In 2016, we successfully hosted the DNC, and in 2017, we successfully hosted the NFL Draft. And so I want to bring that to everyone's attention because we are a great city of hospitality and tourism, and we should be grateful that we're being recognized by this international organization. And with that, Mr. President, colleagues are invited to join us after council for a briefing by the Food Policy Advisory Council. Our city's children are about to be released from school, which means that they will not have, many of them will not have breakfast and lunch. So this briefing is entitled, is intended to address child hunger and food security with a delicious lunch provided by Weaver's Way. With that said, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 21, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved and probably second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 21, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? As have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.[1781.62]